So this is Sarah Wolf calling to order the September 8th meeting of the Manchester Essex Regional School Committee. Welcome to everyone who is joining us tonight and to 1623 videos for recording the meeting and posting it for us. We will begin with public comment. I just want to take a moment to remind everyone that this is an opportunity for comment, not debate. Please know that while we will not be immediately responding to your comments or answering questions, we are listening and paying attention to your concerns. During the meeting, we will be focusing on items that are listed on our posted agenda. If you would like to make a comment, please put your name and address in the chat. We allow 20 minutes for public comment and we ask each person to live with their comments to three minutes. I will be timed in the comments tonight and I will ring my bell after two and a half minutes. And after public comment is over, the chat function will be turned off to allow us to devote our full attention to the meeting. I know that there are some people who wanted to comment, but I'm not seeing any. Oh, there we go. So we have, we'll start with Catherine Howe. Catherine, you may go ahead and make your comment.
Hi, this is Catherine Howe. Three Wood Home Lane is my address. I am going to first read a letter that has been signed by 20 parents of the third grade class. This is representing comments from 20 of those parents. And this was emailed to the school committee earlier today. So I'm just going to read this letter verbatim first. Dear Principal Willis, Superintendent Bowden, and members of the school committee, we understand you and the teachers are doing an enormous amount to maintain the quality of Manchester's education and the health of students in these trying times. Thank you for your efforts. Nevertheless, it is our understanding that the number of third grade teachers and classrooms has been reduced from three to two. Generally speaking, having a significantly larger class size is detrimental to the learning process, and this is especially true for elementary school children. This year in particular, it will be even more damaging to change the number of teachers from three to two for a couple of very clear reasons. First, from a health standpoint, if we have agreed to have children wear masks due to COVID-19, then it cannot simultaneously make sense to significantly increase the number of children in each third grade class. According to the original Massachusetts guidance, the optimal size for an ongoing group of people meeting in person is roughly 10 people. While we recognize that strictly limiting classes to under 10 is likely impossible, increasing the class size to more than 20 students will obviously introduce substantially greater risk of spreading COVID-19 in these classes. In addition to this, from a learning standpoint, our children lost the opportunity for in-person learning for a significant part of the last school year. They truly need as much teacher time and individualized focus as possible to recover from last year's lost learning opportunities. For these reasons, we believe this decision should have been discussed with the affected parent community and needs to be remedied as quickly as possible. We hope you will engage with us in a discussion about potential mitigation efforts. And again, this was signed by 20 plus parent families. And now I'm going to make a couple of extemporaneous comments that I cannot represent for the whole group. They are mine. Quickly, I know I'm on a time limit here. I would just like to note that for me personally, I would be here speaking today even if COVID disappeared tomorrow or never existed. My concerns are largely about the impact to learning for these students, the loss of individualized learning and one-to-one opportunities with such a large class size. Second, I would note that the school district itself has a stated goal per the teacher's contract of 19 to 22 kids per classroom in these grades, grades three to five. And so my question, you know, and there is in that contract, a list of things that the school should consider if the class size is going to exceed more than 20% of these guidelines, which it does now. So I'd like to know what was considered by the school board as alternative solutions to these large classes. And then finally, it's my understanding that at least one other grade in the three to five category has the same or fewer students with two classrooms.
I'm sorry, your time's up.
Oh, fine. I'll wrap it up. I would just like to know how the decision was made to between these different classrooms of the same sizes. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Nope.
Thank you. And then Katie Vandy is up next.
Hi, can everyone here and see me okay?
I can hear you. I can see you. Yeah.
Okay, great. All right. Well, I'm Katie Vandy. I'm an Essex resident. The children we love as parents and serve as a school are why we are here. Their safety and well-being are the top priority. My statements herein are set out of concern as a parent and as an arrant of over 15 years. DUCY's recent guidance states that schools will be required to show proof of 80% vaccination. Once a school reaches this number, all vaccinated students may attend school without a mask. Unvaccinated students must continue to wear a mask in perpetuity. Historically, there is a legal process for adding vaccines to a child's schedule. Last year, the flu vaccine was added and then had to be repealed as the mandate did not follow that process. DUCY's mandate is using a measure outside of law to coerce and incentivize getting a vaccine, which is still not approved for children under the age of 16. In Ms. Bowden's recent email on the matter, it was stated, "I ask that you vaccinate your eligible children as we work toward achieving DUCY's benchmark for relaxing the masking requirements. I hope this district does not attempt to further coerce students into receiving a medical intervention just so we can meet DUCY, who is not a medical authority's requirements. Medical decisions should only be made from a place of personal conviction. It's a private conversation between a patient and their physician." This email also discusses the strategic plan addressing diversity, equity, and inclusion. How can this district follow coercive, discriminatory, and unlawful guidance? And then state you want to address diversity and inclusion. It would be the definition of hypocrisy as diversity also applies to diversity of thought and opinion. This mandate would divide our schools. Families choosing not to vaccinate would quickly be known by name as their children would be identifiable by the visible mask they will be forced to wear. This will lend way to bullying and peer pressure, forcing children to wear part of their medical record on their face, which could be considered a violation of medical privacy. This district prides itself on its anti-bullying and discrimination policies stating that "We encourage positive experiences and human values for children, all of whom have differing personal and family characteristics. And we must consider in all decisions made within the school the potential benefits or adverse consequences those decisions might have on all segments of society." This is language taken directly from the MRSD handbook. If we want to continue to model behavior leading by example, I would recommend this district send messaging to DUCY that discrimination and coercion has no place at M R S D. I understand your hands are tied here, but it doesn't mean we can't speak up when something's wrong. I would also recommend a more open and unbiased discussion over DUCY's recommendations. Discussion with parents will lend way to trust in this district and help develop cooperation when we are being threatened with division. We must put our personal and political opinions aside and look at how we can keep our children safe and work through this time together without giving into divisive, diversion, or coercion. We must show our children it's okay to choose what's right for ourselves and making an informed and conscious choice in alignment with our personal values will not be punished or judged. I truly hope that this district rises to defend the children that it serves. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Katie. And Jake Foster.
Hi, all. Thanks for your efforts to get the school year started. Our transition from my sign into grade six has been overall quite smooth, so thank you so much. My quick request here is a reiteration request. If you could please post documents that are associated with the agenda. As a member of the committee that helped with some of the strategic planning last spring, I'm very interested to see where things go, but I can't comment on things we can't see. So I'd appreciate if in the future documents could be posted with the agenda. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? There's no one else in the chat. Is there anyone on the phone who is hoping to make a comment? You could unmute yourself now and identify yourself. Okay, then I think that is it for public. Is there somebody who would like to make a comment? All right, then I think that that is for public comments and we'll go right into my report, which is very, very short tonight. Hey, I just wanted to say hi. It feels like the year is off to a mostly normal start. I don't want to steal Pam's thunder, but I was able to walk through all the schools on Wednesday and it was great to see the kids and teachers in person learning their classroom routines as usual. The classrooms looked wonderful and welcoming as always. I got to see the new playground at Essex Elementary and the new building in Manchester, as well as the middle high school in Action. We are really lucky to have such special schools in our district. And tonight, we will be spending most of our meeting on our district-wide strategic plan and goal setting for the year. And then before I turn it over, I just have a brief announcement on behalf of the CPAC who couldn't be here tonight. The CPAC is the Special Education Parent Advisory Council. This group is having their annual picnic at Text Point on Friday after school afternoon. This event is for children who receive special education along with their parents and guardians. So thanks again, everybody who's joining us. Glad to have you with us. And we will move on to the consent agenda, which includes warrants.
Sarah, I think we have Lucas with us tonight, even though he's not formally on the agenda.
Lucas, are you back?
I am, yeah.
Hey, go ahead, Bill. Let us have it.
Sure. So my report's pretty short as well. I just wanted to say that I think we've had a great start to the school year. I think, you know, the students were all just glad to start the year off normally. And everything is pretty much the same to what a normal, like, non-COVID year would look like, with like the exception of wearing our masks, of course. But like I said before, it's been a really solid start to the school year. Our clubs and our after-school activities and our sports, we're all starting to meet how we normally would meet. And yeah, so like the overall energy in the building is awesome. And yeah, I think we're all just looking forward to the rest of the school year. And that's it. Thank you.
I muted myself. Okay. And Lucas, you're starting senior year, right?
I am, yeah.
That's so exciting. Okay, well, you're off to a good start.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, so I believe that Avi sent our warrant information separate from the regular packet, and I don't think that we had any minutes. Am I right?
Right, we need a big minutes catch-up, so I owe you getting together with Gail and making sure I am clear on everything.
Okay, so we don't have any minutes. Do we have a motion to accept the warrant?
Yep, Vouchers 1008 and Fiscal 21, Number 1056.
Can I have some motion?
So moved, Warnock.
And a second?
Second, Kate.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or questions on the warrant? Okay, since there's no discussion, I'll do the roll call. Eric?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Kate? Kate, are you a yes? I can see her, but I can't see her. Chris?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Matt? Oh, I'm sorry, that says myself. I can't read because I'm also in the dark in this other room. And Kate, coming back to you, did you want to approve the warrant?
Yes, yes, sorry.
Okay, thank you. So that's a unanimous path for approving the consent, the warrant. And I think we can move right into subcommittee report?
I'll just toss in that all the available draft minutes are posted on the website if anyone is looking for them.
Oh, great. That's good to know. All right, so moving on to subcommittee reports, I know that Teresa has facilities and finance. So Teresa, do you want to take those for us?
Sure. So for the facilities update, I reached out to Annie and am happy to report, as you won't be surprised, that everything is on time and on budget for the new school. Couple points to, that she wanted me to share here were that the building committee has been offering tours, one last week and one this week, to basically stakeholders, site visits to go through, ask all our questions. I believe the last one is tomorrow that we have the opportunity. So other school committee members, if you want to go see it and ask questions about the building and the process and how different decisions were made and things like that, that's the opportunity to do it. She says that, of course, they're finishing up, but of course, you know, as we know, the school is open and being used. The punch list should take a little while to get through, but everything is going swimmingly. She reports that regarding the sign for Memorial Elementary School, a few, there's been some snafus along the way, but they were presented with a few options and decided to just back that money out of the project and leave that task with Jason and the district to handle at a future date because it's not impacting student learning. And so rather than hold up the whole closing of the project just to back that out. Pam, if I'm mischaracterizing anything, please stop me. Okay. Excellent. And then the second thing, so that's Memorial. And then the second thing is just that moving forward, again, looking to have a tour with the school, with the building committee people potentially, and with school committees, members of the Essex Elementary School and the middle high school. And I don't actually know if that was with the whole building committee, but it just was brought up in the context of this to look at and evaluate where things stand so that we can meet our goal, as we talked about last meeting, of setting a timeframe and moving forward with those projects. So that's what she wanted to share about those things. And the third thing that I would add for this is just that at some point, it would be good for Chris and I to start getting notified of when these meetings happen so we can know what the process is. We may, I know it's closing out this one, but as we transition to the next, that would be helpful for us. Did I miss anything, Pam?
No. So do you and Chris want to now start receiving the agenda and being included on the SBC Tuesday night meetings? I think that's a great place to start.
I've been recommended that that would be a good idea. So even if we can't make every single one, at least to get a feel for what this is like, so that the process moving forward, we have some understanding as they close out Memorial.
Sure. We will have Christina add you to that distribution list.
Thank you. And then the finance subcommittee report is, oh, did we do questions? Is that what we do? Do you want me to just go right into it, Sarah?
Does anybody have questions about that building?
Not a question. The only thing I would add is right now we're doing tours for the committees, so the building committee and the school committee. We know the public wants to get in. If you've gone by, if you're a parent and doing drop-off, you know that we're moving into phase three right now. So we're not completely done the project and it's all the exterior work that needs to be done. So once that's tidied up and we can move people in and out of the building easily, we're going to put together the ribbon-cutting ceremony and open hours for the community to come in and see this beautiful new building.
So then the finance subcommittee report, this is sort of, probably should have been shared from last meeting. So in the category of getting our feet under us, I didn't realize that I should have reported out on the collaboration meeting from last one, but have learned that that's the case. So for new school committee members, just as a heads up, because it wasn't always obvious to me, so the finance subcommittee is me and Matt. And we meet as part of this collaboration team with stakeholders from the district and from each member town. And so, and also for people listening, so that someone from their boards of selectmen, finance committee, town managers, and then Pam and Avi and us, so the people who have to really come together and collaborate to make sure that a budget can, that there's no surprises during budget season. So we met at the beginning of August, most recently. Avi did a great job presenting an overview of the most recent the SMP rating, is that what it was? The AA+ rating that we had, and that coupled with the audit, giving just a strong sense that our spending and financials are appropriate and responsible and had some discussion about that. The goal of this collaboration group again is to have these discussions there so that nothing's coming up surprising in the budget season. We learned that Essex is facing potentially an issue with needing more police or shifting the model that they use, that sort of thing. So we know that that might be something coming down the line. And we continued talking about education in particular of the different committees, so especially new members coming on to finance committees from the towns or to school committees, whatever it may be, new members being able to be educated. So we have a session coming at the end of September. Is that specifically for the Essex Finance Committee or is it for both towns?
It's Essex Finance Committee and Board of Selectmen together, and I believe it's September 28th.
Okay. And then we have our next meeting coming before that, I think on the 14th collaboration meeting, so that we're all on the same page going into that presentation. It seems like there's a lot of focus right now. It's a new group in that there's a couple new people coming into it and we're still kind of making those relationships so that we can effectively collaborate in our roles, Matt and I. But a lot of this education moving forward on the different things that aren't quite as obvious that the district has to do and makes a big difference. So that's where we're going with that. That's all I got.
Thank you, Teresa.
You're welcome.
Does anyone have questions for Teresa? All right, you did a heavy lift this time. Did the policy committee meet?
Policy committee did not meet.
Okay, thank you for letting me know. Kate and I did work on the goals, which we are going to be talking about later. And the negotiation team also did not meet, although we will be negotiating a new contract this year coming up. So with that, I turn it over to you, Pam.
Okay, thanks. And like you and Lucas, my report on the beginning of the year is brief because the beginning of the year has been incredibly smooth. And that's pretty awesome, given what we've been through over the past year and a half prior. So it's just, I think Lucas captured it best. It is just so awesome having the regular pace of life back on campus. You know, there are kids here after school, the practices are going on. People seem very natural in their environment. And other than the masks, there isn't too much that isn't typical to the start of a school year. I know the teachers brought a lot of positive energy back with them. We are very optimistic that we're going to be able to use our mitigation plan to keep everyone here in person for the whole year. It will be out of our control if we're not, but I just think it's very upbeat and people are looking forward to the normal flow of the year and just getting back to focusing on what we do best, which is classes with kids. And that's been kind of our mantra for September. There's a lot of work that we have to do. We're going to talk a little bit about our goals and our planning in a bit, but really the focus in September for all of us is to just reengage with kids in the community and get back to basics. So we're excited about the year ahead, very positive and optimistic. And we just had a tremendous amount of work going on on campus over the summer to prepare for school. The Memorial School Project, the Essex Elementary Playground Project, we went through a couple of iterations on what classrooms would look like. You know, in July, we thought, you know, we would be totally back to normal, but then we at the last minute had to do a couple of modifications. So our maintenance and facilities team and our tech teams have just been outstanding at answering the call and getting things done very quickly to make sure we're prepared to get back to school. So often we're running two big things. I already mentioned the Essex Elementary Playground and I already commented that the Memorial School looks fantastic and everyone's enjoying the inside. We want to get people in as soon as possible. And we're in phase three, so it's not really done yet. And as soon as it is, we will be off and running. So another part of my typical opening report is an update on our enrollment, which will tie to the public comment in the beginning and the concern about the class size at grade three. Not sure how well you can see this. I know if you use your tools in the left-hand column, you can expand it a little bit. I don't know that my expansion here on my screen works for you, but we will post this. This is always our enrollment report. I will say at this time of year, it's fluid. Our official enrollment doesn't post really until mid, end of October when we upload it to the state. But we are aware that third grade at Memorial is one of our largest classes at 25. And what we tend to do is we, every year, we typically have a class that runs higher or lower. So at 25, that third grade, they are too shy of the fourth and fifth grade at 23. So I'm not going to speak to how John made his determinations because he's he's got much more detail about the actual makeup of each of the classes. But we typically will wait till we're at the 25% overage or 28 kids per section to begin preparations to try to onboard another teacher. Onboarding another teacher simply means expanding the budget or eliminating one thing to put it in. So given where we are financially, it's not easy, but we can certainly look at this and track it and prioritize it for next year if that is something that continues to be a concern. What we tend to try to do is not look at, obviously, if you're a parent in this class, this may be of concern to you. But as we look across the grade level and at the total numbers, what we can see is we have highs and lows in each school with the high and the low being about the same. Essex is running a little bit on the lower side this year. Where we're at, though, overall, is if you take an average across all grade levels in the district, we're running at 19 students on average per section or 18 students on average per section in Essex. So we are about even across district when you look at all. Look at both schools. So there is no real drastic need. One thing we could discuss doing as a remedy to the third grade at Memorial, which we've done in the past, is offering parents at Memorial the option to enroll in Essex for the year if they want the benefit of a smaller class size. And in this case, as I'm looking at the numbers, Essex could certainly absorb several more students at the third grade level because that tends to, that looks to be one of their smaller enrollments. So we can certainly offer that to the third grade parents who are looking for the benefit of a smaller class size. We could do a cross-district enrollment option. John will monitor, and I'm certain that if he and the teachers feel that they need the assistance of a TA, I will have the request and we will do our best to find the resources to provide that. So that's typically how we approach. We watch for, kind of just to recap, anytime we start to get outside the benchmark, which is 18 to 20 at the third grade level, we will start to monitor. And as we approach about 25%, which tends to be about 28 students per section over, we start to create the plan for bringing on another teacher or looking at another grade level, which might be smaller, and moving a teacher into that role. If that's not feasible, we look at adding a TA, we look at offering an option of cross-district enrollment or any other creative ideas that may be able, the teachers may come up with. So we're here to support the class. We're here to support the teachers in order for them to do their job. Good news is what we're seeing at the middle school, so many, many years, we talked about a bubble at the middle school, but those class sizes are coming down. So this year, if you look at the average class size at the sixth grade, we're looking at 16, 19 at the seventh grade, and 21 at the eighth grade. So this is significantly lower than it's been in past years. They were averaging between 25 and 28 per section. So those numbers are coming down. I know that the sixth grade is enjoying the small class sizes this year. This isn't to say we won't be seeing enrollment going up in the future. Basically, we have seen quite a few move-ins over the summer, but nothing that has impacted what our initial projections were for the middle school. And high school is holding about steady, seeing the end of those bubble classes coming through and having the largest class sizes in district. So we're pretty much overall in range of our benchmarks at all grade levels. That's what this column gives you here. So overall, good news in terms of managing enrollment. Are there any other specific questions? I know that was a lot. And I tend to get into the details and sometimes might blow the big picture for everyone. So if you have questions, I'm happy to answer. Top takeaways, enrollment is, our total enrollment is at 12, is 1270. If we look cross-district, all classes are within the benchmark range, but we are aware that we have some classes which fall outside and need to be watched for more potential staff adds.
I have a quick clarifying question on this. So just so I'm clear, when you were saying about the benchmark being 18 to 20 for that third grade class as an example, and then we're roughly 20 for that Third Grade class as an example, and then we're roughly 25% outside of that. But you're, are you looking at that as the average class size across the district, that bottom thing? Or or in that, because it would, unless my memory is wrong, 25 is is there?
Needing to be able to split at one school into enough to justify the added section. So 20, I maybe, 28 is typically the trigger number, where if you go to three, you have enough to justify having three sections.
Got it. Thank you.
And I probably misspoke using 25% on the 22-range benchmark because we go up to 22 at fourth grade. Sorry if I confused the situation.
Pam, have these years historically been larger? That 25 kids at Memorial this year, was that? I see 50 kids in Grade Three this year. Was that 50 kids in Second Grade last year, 50 kids in First Grade two years ago? Or have these class sizes changed much over the last couple of years?
A little bit of our problem is when we did our projections for October, we went, when we did our projections in the spring for the fall, we used the October 19 report because we had pretty erratic enrollment last year with people opting for either, I'm sorry, gonna frog my throat, homeschool, some kids went to private school, and now they're coming back. I can certainly go back and take a look. I do think one of the reasons they did, my recollection is that we had three sections at Second Grade last year. So they had the benefit of the 13 or 14 students per class, which certainly will make it feel like the 25 is that much larger.
So if, just to to close this out for my train of thought, if parents have continued concerns, this is something they need to discuss with their principal. And if they do want to engage in the possibility of a cross-district placement, get in touch with Mr. Willis.
Absolutely. And you know, this isn't, enrollment isn't an exact science, and we do the best we can. I mean, if you want to look across right now, I I know the Fifth Grade has 28. Aspen's recording 25, so it's just the system hasn't caught up with the actuals yet. But if they're at 25, one can make the argument, why don't you take a teacher from here and move that person to Memorial School? Because it really, that wouldn't, that's a short-term solution and incredibly disruptive to the life and organization of the building. So we will have lows in which people will say, depending on what your perspective is and what your lens is, why don't you cut a teacher and push that class size up? Just as if you're in the class of 25, you're feeling the pressure and saying, why aren't you adding a teacher here? So there are going to be some, it will never be perfectly smooth, given how the distribution falls. So I think everyone makes best effort to try to make it equitable and ensure that where you're putting your resources, and you may end up with a smaller class size, at times, it may have to do with the makeup of the class. And that, you know, going to 25 with a particularly difficult makeup or a challenge for the teacher in terms of differentiation, you're better off kind of going with the three sections in one. So it's like, it's a balancing act. To your point, the principal knows all of those details better. He may not be able to share all of the details, but he's the person to have the conversation with.
Grade doesn't have 34 kids per class?
I'm sorry?
Does Fifth Grade have 34 kids per class?
No, if Memorial held, had two sections at
Oh, that's what it would be.
Fifth Grade, there would be 34 kids.
Thank you.
So I'm set. Opening was great, good, good vibe around campus, and great to have things back to normal and looking forward to a great year.
Awesome. Do you want to move right into the first continued business item, which is COVID receipts update?
Happy to.
Okay.
Sorry, sorry about the coughing. Okay, the update tonight, we will reserve COVID report like we were doing last year for the beginning of October because that will probably be our first decision point around masking. That's when the state is thinking about allowing us to reduce the masking requirement to allow vaccinated students not to mask if our entire school population is over 80% vaccinated, excuse me. So that's off in the distance. We also have a couple of webinars coming up over the course of the week. Originally, they weren't intending to take data on COVID positives in school. They will be considering that, and I think we're going to get an update on that tomorrow and how that will look for the year. If that's the case, we'll continue to track and report it to you at the beginning of every month. What the update is tonight, and I believe the email went out right as we were starting the meeting, is in our mitigation plan, we talked about retaining MedBot for this year, using, testing for students who display symptoms at school and implementing a test and stay option for students and staff identified as close contacts. So a package of three things designed to try to keep people in school instead of having to go out on extended quarantines and have a break in the educational process. So the letter that's going out reiterates what my MedBot is. So if you, if you were part of the program last year, which everybody was, unless you're new to the district or coming into K, your account's going to flip over and you'll get an email to just reestablish your account and the app. Everyone who's new will get the introductory email on how to, how to, how to set it up and where to find the app. If you don't know, there's links in the email that went out. So the goal, the intent is on Monday morning to restart the daily screening process. Now, the intent on the daily screening process is for the nurses to take a first pass at identifying and keeping, ensuring that people who may be symptomatic stay home and get tested before coming to school so that we can minimize, you know, COVID getting into the building and having to do symptomatic testing here. If students do not present in the morning or or staff do not present in the morning with symptoms, pass through the daily attestation and come to school, but begin to display symptoms here, we will have test kits available so that the nurses could give them the 15-minute red test here on site to determine whether or not they're positive or negative. If they're negative, they may stay in school, return to class, continue with the day. If they're positive, they'll be asked to go home and get further testing. The test and stay for close contacts is really geared toward eliminating unnecessary quarantines. Now, there'll be a lot of language in the letter explaining what a close contact is. So the definition of close contact has not necessarily changed, but they've added a bunch of exemptions to it, which essentially means if you're in school and masking and you're vaccinated, you will likely never be a close contact. Essentially, close contacts will be students who, and adults who are unvaccinated and have had exposure. It's not a perfect, you know, nurses will go through the checklist with people. So it may, there may be some variations on this, but it is very unlikely that, particularly at the middle high school, that we'll have many close contacts. The concern is, the concern area to to keep an eye on is our entire elementary student population is unvaccinated at this point. So we could see some traditional quarantine situations there. If we're masking and adhering to our three-foot distancing, we're very hopeful that we can avoid it. One thing all parents should know that, and staff members, is the testing is voluntary. If a student is sent to the nurse with symptoms or identified as a close contact, note, any test will require the consent of the parent. It's our intent at this point because we don't anticipate a large volume of of students needing testing to to get consent at the time it's needed, as opposed to having every family fill out a form for every student out of the gate. So that's how we're going to begin the process. And the fallback is if a family chooses not to participate in the testing option, traditional quarantine rules will apply, and the student or the staff member will have to be home for at least seven days from the point of exposure. There are more details to the definitions. What we found last year was it's best to have those conversations with our school nurses. Our nurses are fantastic. They're well-versed in all of this. They've been, you know, spending quite a bit of time this past week getting up to speed on the new rules and regulations, and they feel confident and ready to roll things out. I think we were very hopeful that we would make it through the month of September without any identifications. But we are anticipating as less outdoor activities are taking place and more things are happening inside, we will see an uptick in some numbers. Are there questions about the testing?
Pam, do we know what the Med, will the MedBot screener look how it looked last year? I know that there's new guidance about like symptoms by themselves versus symptoms when in combination with other symptoms. Do you have any information about that?
It'll be the short version that we used at the end of the year, and it will be, not be complicated. And the request is that if you are red, you have to contact the nurse and talk through all of the variations with her. Do you have a specific question that I can relay to them? Like a specific combination of symptoms or?
No, I'm just, I'm just thinking of how attendance will be impacted by, you know, kids who have a cough. And normally, you would send your kid to school with a cough, and now you shouldn't be sending your kid to school with a cough. And, you know, if it's a cough with a fever, absolutely not. But maybe it's just a cough, that sort of thing. And sort of, do we have any plan for how to deal with the increases in absences? If kids need to stay home for things that they wouldn't have necessarily need to stay home before?
Well, I think they don't need to stay home as long as the conversation with the nurse results in an assessment that the student's symptoms are either not, not enough symptoms combined or symptoms can be reasonably attributed to something else. That's the point of the conversation with the nurse. You don't stay home, if you come up red on my, on on MedBot, the intent isn't to have you stay home. The intent is for there to be a secondary screening with the nurse to ascertain what the potential risk is. So, and then they will either clear you to come in or have you go, stay out and go for further testing.
Is there sort of a timeframe that parents could expect that communication to happen within?
They go make every, they're going to make their best effort to have those calls done as quickly as possible in the morning. If we're in a horrible cold and flu snap, it may take a little longer than it will, you know, the middle of September. Yep, Teresa?
That's Sarah, that's me.
I'm sorry, with both of you, so whomever.
Um, if your child is feeling, has a little cough or, and you think it's not COVID, can people do, people can get that at-home testing at CVS now? Like, so does that, is that something that you could do and then tell the nurse that you've already done it at home?
I'd like to do this. I'm not a nurse and I'm not a doctor. So what I'd like to do is if you want to go through and put together a series of questions that we could turn into an FAQ, I'm happy to have the nurses join us at our next session. And they can go through it because what I think they would say is it's completely dependent on how something presents and a combination of factors of the individual. So I don't, I would not want to just start throwing out random responses to these questions and give people either concern or false hope.
I think that's really smart. So Teresa, were you gonna?
I do still have a question, but it's it's not that specific in that way. So I love the the flow charts and the letter wording and all of that. But one thing that wasn't obvious to me until I learned today is that this is specifically for exposure in school. So what's still unclear to me and what maybe we could clarify in the wording of the letter is if you have a known exposure outside of school and you're vaccinated, are you supposed to just go to school or are you supposed to quarantine? Are you supposed to test first? Or if you're not vaccinated, what those things are? And that's really unclear to me still with this.
I think, again, not speaking for the nurses, but I would, I think the response would be that's a point that's a little unclear because it crosses two domains. DPH oversees close contacts in the community and identifications in the community. So if I, you know, I went to dinner, I, you know, I caught COVID. I went and got my test. My local health authority was notified that I'm a positive. I provided my list of close contacts. DPH will notify them about their quarantining responsibilities. At some point, we're going to, if if it starts to escalate, there will have to be a crosswalk between a DPH quarantine and a school exemption. So if you look at the exemption, I can flip my, the exemption, the in-school exemptions for close contacts only apply to in-school because it's considered a controlled environment. So if your close contact happens in a restaurant, whether you're an adult or a child, it is unclear at this point whether you would still be considered exempt, unless you're exempted by the town board. And this is where, again, if you would like a panel of that, of the medical folk to come in and answer these questions, that's fine. We continue to encourage you, if you have a question, to call your nurse because what tends to happen is they will talk it through with you. They may call their town colleague for some input there. They may call the school doctor for some input there and kind of put all of the pieces together for you. So we're all working through the new set of rules. But in a real big-picture approach, best advice I can give is the rules for in-school are the rules for in-school because they assume everything is monitored and managed.
Maybe we could just include some language in that letter saying, please be aware, this is for. Oh, I mean, I know it says while in school, but it's something really bold that says if your exposure is outside of the school, your Department of Public Health will advise you or something.
The letter's already out.
Makes it super clear. Okay.
And we won't be testing anyone, like, the the purpose of MedBot is that first line of attack. So if you're answering honestly in the morning, you should not be coming through the doors if you had an exposure or you're showing symptoms. If you do make it through the door, then you'll be eligible, if you show your symptoms at school, for the in-school testing, and then we'll catch you under our umbrella.
Thank you.
Pam, bottom line is if you have, if you're not sure.
Yes, please call your, they really are the best resource on this. And again, if they don't know the answer off the top of their head, they're going to tap into their network and our support network to find you the best answer. I just had the, you know, I've had several conversations with other organizations that we partner with that are under other, under govern, other governance, other than the DESE. So there are several sets of rules at play. So the nurse is the best, is definitely your best point of contact to have your individual questions answered. I think the good news is, right, let's look at the upside. All of the travel is gone. You know, this is really now a very narrow slice of, we're trying to manage the in-school environment and keep the in-school environment as COVID-free as possible. And there are lots, lots of measures in place that automatically put a good number of students on the exempted list. And I know, you know, there were some comments made at the beginning about vaccination. The reality is for us, vaccination is the key to exemption, and it's the key to keeping kids in person and minimizing the amount of quarantine and risk that we that we face in schools by the current guidelines. And again, we're not all, we're all not trained medical professionals. So we have to, at some point, rely on the guidance that we were being given and do our best for it.
Pam, do we have any plan for how we will manage any extended absences for quarantining or sickness?
An absence is an absence like in any other year. So if you're out, you'll, you know, contact your teacher, and they will provide work to you, to your student to stay on top of things or to make up when they return.
Any other questions for Pam? Any other questions for Pam? It's a lot to take in. I spent a long time trying to understand all of this today. And so I'm just really glad that we have our school nurses and our school doctor as resources, and we can keep going back to our health professionals when we have questions.
It is a lot to take in, and sometimes I, my goal, at times, is to kind of cut through it all. We need to wear our masks, try to adhere as best as possible to the three feet. If you're eligible, please get vaccinated because it's going to help the whole community. And we just need to keep doing what we're doing. And by the way, the regs are written, we should have minimal impact with exposure with our highest risk area being the elementary because of our state of vaccinations.
Right.
But by last assessment, we're at about 76% vax rate at the secondary. So I think we're in, we're in pretty good shape. And our, both our communities have a high vaccination rate.
Pam, numbers wise, when we're looking at the middle and high school, do those count as one building or are they two separate schools?
I would count them as one site.
Okay. And do, like, maybe you know the, know the answer to this, but do we have the numbers that 80% at that school could be vaccinated age-wise?
They're looking at your total population, adults included. So I do think we could hit 80%, even though the sixth graders, most of them are not eligible at this point.
Right, thanks.
So I get to 76% and that's the student rate based on the published numbers for 12 to 19 combined. If you back out the sixth grade as a component of the population, I think we would drop to the lower 70s. The other caution I would have not to belabor this is this could change tomorrow in either direction. So I think what we're trying to do is stay prepared for multiple, stay optimistic. I, I, you know, I do really believe in my heart that if we do the right things, we're going to be able to maintain this sense of normalcy that we feel now throughout the year. But, you know, we'd be remiss if we didn't have our backup plans. So we do have the backup plans, but we don't want to dwell on them. So we're ready in case, you know, the guidance could change in either direction come October. So I think we're in a little bit of a wait and see and prepare for multiple scenarios. All right. Happy to answer any other questions. All right, let's go back to the agenda. All right.
So we're up to a strategic plan.
So what was included in your packet is a, is a draft version, and you are getting kind of first look at how all of the notes got put together over the summer. Because I wanted your feedback first before we convene the group that was meeting in the spring to provide their feedback. What you have in front of you is what we worked, this group worked on, vetted the mission, vision and core value statements over the last few meetings. I'm really having a little trouble here moving my pages around. So let me see if I can. Times our Wi-Fi glitches at this time of night, so just please bear with me. And we'll see if I can get this up in a way that I can manipulate it better. So last session, like I, let me just quickly recap. So mission, vision, core values have been part of our conversation over our past few meetings, and they're for the most part locked in and approved by school committee. This piece of the document is where I'd like some initial feedback from the school committee because this essentially becomes your plan. Over the summer, we met with our CEF partners who did, who assisted us with the community input gathering and some of the initial brainstorming around this last spring to process through all of the feedback and try to distill it into, you know, we are, we were aiming for three to five top-level priorities for the district, which would then become the driver for more detailed district planning documents to come. So from all of the inputs gathered and communicated back to us, these were the goals, or the priorities rather, that we distilled them down to. So I think what I'm looking for from this group is just some reaction on the priorities. So thoughts on the theory of action, which I think is a work in progress, and just some inputs that we can use to have some further conversation before this gets solidified. So what we tried to do is to look at all of the commonalities, all of the different wants. And I think what we saw in there was that there were a lot of things people wanted us to do. So how did you, how do you distill that into a priority or an objective that's larger than just doing a thing that becomes more of a, a task or an implementation? And we thought these were the major buckets that captured what the community is looking for from its schools. So looking for feedback.
Pam, initial feedback from Ken?
Yeah.
As I look at it, it's good, and I'm not based in the previous, but I almost, there's seven or eight distinct categories of document. And I'm, I'm just having my initial reactions, oh, boy, we've, you know, it's almost, it's almost too much in there. It feels like detail.
This is the overview.
Yeah. Exactly. And I know this was something I struggled with when we went through the process. So if you, we've got strategic objectives, we've got priorities. It feels to me like it needs more distillation or clarity around. If you're going to say you're going to do everything well, then you're not going to do anything well, sometimes is my fear. So that's just my initial reaction, and it probably could be tempered or adjusted. I like, I like the content. I like what's said there. It just feels like an awful lot.
So I guess if we want to, and, and that's good feedback. So I think when you're getting, you could chop off the objectives and just look at the initiatives to get a sense of what we're trying to accomplish.
That, something like.
The objective starts to get into a little bit more of the planning. And, and I, and I see what you're saying because it, we had even another layer of detail under here, which is more toward the district improvement plan.
Yeah, and strategic should really be the, you know, the, the why. And then it percolates down to how and the what. And it, it feels like in what's listed as strategic objectives, they're almost high-level tactical objectives. And I guess I also, it makes me think about, at what point do we go from deployment as a district into, okay, that's school level or grade level as opposed to district level? Because there's, there's some value in having a strategic district level plan and then allowing the schools or the, the different subgroups to have some ownership in creating their vision, their objectives that align with the overall.
Right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I think one thought on that, Ken, is that what I think we heard a lot of is that we lack the vertical alignment. So part of this may be by design, trying to keep everyone within some guardrails. It, it may be tighter than mo, many would want to see because that's what we seem to be struggling to get to, which is you might have four different visions, but that vision has to articulate into one larger look. But I think, I mean, if, if it's, you know, the suggestion of the committee that we, we move all the strategic objectives into the district improvement document, we could certainly do that.
You clarify for all of us then, the, so, I mean, the strategic plan, we're looking at, is that the 10-year overview here? And then a district improvement plan goes for how many? So what, what is the purpose or distinction between the two? So we all know what we're dealing with.
Sure, the district improvement plan is kind, is like the tactical plan.
Yep.
So we would take celebrate nurture, celebrate and nurture an inclusive and diverse school culture to recognize the contributions in uniqueness. And then we would look at, okay, three years. What are the, what are we going to do within the next three years at the district level to promote this priority? What do gains look like? What needs to be accomplished at the end of the, like, what are the things we will do? Who will deliver them and when will they be done by?
So the DIP, that's a three-year cycle.
That's a three-year cycle. So this, think of this as 10.
Yep.
And then three, three years within.
Okay, got it. I have a different kind of feedback or actually kind of a question, if that's all right.
Sure.
On the, in the objectives, first of all, I see, I see what Ken's saying because it does feel kind of like, or I guess I would guess that we would see in the district improvement plan, stuff that really closely aligns with these objectives, like that would be there, but I could be wrong. But on the, in the SEL objective there, the SEL leadership model to train staff and all of that, did not ruler do a lot of this kind of stuff? And how does that fit in? Because we did so much with it already. So what am I missing?
So I think.
Get it across all the schools on the same page or is?
It's something that needs to be nurtured and continually trained upon, trained on. I don't think we're there yet. I feel like we got derailed in year two of implementation.
Okay.
And went into COVID. So we have some of the language down. We use the term ruler. But to say that we are actually implementing with fidelity across all grade levels in all classrooms, no. And I think we're at the point in implementation where you start to see, well, this looks good on paper, but in, in real implementation, there are some, there are some glitches. So I think the, like, the high school would like to work on an implementation plan better designed for the age group and for the fact that you have seven different teachers in a day.
Yep.
So I think there's a considerable amount of work to do to have it working to its full potential.
Got it.
And I think the thing with SEL is also on the messaging and the communication of the fact that it's not something that you do, it's a way that you live. So I think what we want to try to do when we get to the district plan is start to articulate how these, how the social emotional learning really integrates with the culture building under DEI.
I think I just had in my head that a lot of that training and process that happened with the actual group built some of this in. But now I see there's the next step to take when you're taking ownership of it. So thank you.
Again, that vertical piece came up time and again in any topic area that we were looking at, which is what might be done well, K5 in one building may have a cliff. You know, it might be great, it might be a great implementation, but it may not link in a logical way to what comes next. So working through creating those links and making sure that the visions all align to having a unified look throughout, I think is critically important.
Thank you.
I think the intent of this is not to overwhelm anyone, but actually to make what will come, what will sit on top of the district improvement plan in the school improvement plan is kind of a, like a one or two-page look at it as opposed to having to, like, the older document, you would have to go through five or six pages to be able to see all in one location what the major objectives were. So the goal was to try to pull them out and put them on a single page or as close to it as we could get. So to Ken's point, if, if you feel like there's some benefit in kind of taking these sub, just sub-objectives off and just leaving it to like a single page that looks like that, we could certainly do that.
I, I think it is too much on the page, but I don't, I feel like this is a conversation more about content and less about how we show it. But I think Teresa was going to work on like a presentation kind of?
Like, this is, this is the first I've seen of this stuff. But yes, we can make it pretty. There's, I mean, like, we can make it visually accessible, like mis-envisioning core values that I'm working on, which is not a problem.
I'm looking at that, like, the page two and three, and I agree with all those words in the column. It's just like, it's too, it's too many words. It's too much to read on one page for me personally. However, I love, I really, really love the theory of action at the top. I like the if then statement. And I really love the strategic initiatives priorities.
You could leave it to just that as your, your one-page strategic plan. And we could figure out how to get that with Teresa's magic all on one page. And you could, I, I mean, if we're looking at formatting, then you could kind of pull the strategic objectives component and leave that as the kind of the cover page or the, the opening to the district plan.
Yeah. So just, and this is going to be super obvious, but so I'm clear, these strategic objectives, though, these are just generally speaking, like a 10-year process here that we're looking at that we'll then pull chunks from to, to work through.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Just want to make sure it's super clear.
The other thing that we did add was this kind of the concept of the true north with every student at the center of decision-making, which kind of pulls into a single statement, all of the themes of this page. If there aren't further comments, so a lot on format. And what you'll see in the next iteration, or let me put it this way, what you'll see as we start to develop into the district improvement plan is these pieces starting to come a little bit more to life with some how statements. I don't know if you noticed when you were looking at it, but what we tried to do is to correlate the things we were going to do to reach our objectives to the different core values to make sure that everything we were doing was, yeah, was in service to the bigger picture. I think the one we had the biggest question about, let me just throw this up there, is the priority around ensuring funding. This did not come out necessarily explicitly in our process in the spring. But the way we tried, let me go back to this. The way we tried to, to place it was that it's foundational to achieving these larger, these larger goals. Because to get, to get to where we want to go, we have to have a stable operational budget and means and resources to pursue the work that needs to be done. We also think it belongs here because it is something that is unsettled and consumes a great deal of the time and effort of the district. But I think you could argue it one way or the other.
Yeah, I wonder about putting it on here just because I feel like this is more of a document that's really implementation at the building level. And we don't want our principals to have to be thinking all the time about whether they're going to have the money to do something or not. But on the other hand, our principals have to be thinking all the time about whether or not they're going to have the money to do something or not. So.
And they have a responsibility to be financial planners for their, for their sector of the organization.
Right.
And this, I want to make that clear. This is the district level look at where we're going. And then there's a school-level plan that sits under it. So this is the big overview.
Yeah, well, I like it on there then. I mean.
There was a lot of debate. So we're, you know, if you want to engage, I'm, I'm more than happy to. And again, I think. And again, I think you could make an argument either way. But when I think about the time, effort, and work that goes into ensuring that we have the resources, a sustainable multi-year plan is something we've been trying to achieve for many years, but we've yet to do it. And we still, I think, our feeling is that we are still going year to year with a sign, some level of uncertainty. And we have yet to be able to get to building forward. We're always trying to maintain and not step back. And a lot of the creative thinking and efficiency finding and new ways of doing things are implemented just to be able to sustain a basic level. So I think that's why that's why I'm being there. So just look, again, looking for feedback and comments on the big ideas as much as the format.
Yep. I have one on that, that big idea, the, the, so I guess, I guess what I'm just at first glance struggling to see is how those four bullet points connect to that, that specific thing on the broader conversation of what we've talked about, about trying to get to a multi-year thing. If, when I look at these, I, I, I see going year to year. I see, you know, do we have efficiencies? Are HR practices in place? Are we, you know, are, are we looking at ways of spending less or spending appropriately and stuff like that? And I don't, I don't really feel like those connect to that bigger conversation that we've been having, at least since I've been on school committee. But I agree that part of the strategic plan absolutely needs to include that part because it's been such a big part of the, of your efforts. Does that, do you see what I'm saying?
No, I do, because those pieces that we're talking about are actually in my goals. But they might be better, they, they may belong in both places. They're going to be something we're working on this year, but I think a multi-year funding plan and safety net concept, it is, is a big picture want. So yeah, tha- that's exactly the kind of thing that we're looking for, that type of feedback. Wha- what's missing from this? What isn't captured here? What? That type of thing. And we're going to play this out with several groups to get feedback, but I wanted, you know, to start here. Because if there's something that's really off from where you think we need to be and what you think you heard throughout your participation in the process, I, I wanted your input first.
So that being the case, I would say that to me, those four points give me the impression that we're looking for the, the year to, that year-to-year process rather than that big picture that we're looking for, that we're looking, that we're looking toward reviewing each, each thing and, and breaking it down and making sure we're doing the best each year. And it doesn't reflect to me the bigger conversation, like you said.
So these four items?
Yeah. The, the thing itself, the ensure funding for a stable multi-year budget, yes.
Oh, okay.
I see a disconnect. I, I like to keep that, but I, I just see a disconnect between the, the four items underneath it, the objective.
So I'm disconnected. When you were saying four, I was looking at the four priorities.
I'm sorry.
You're saying the four objectives under ensuring funding.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. And I'm glad we clarified that.
That's a really different-
Helps a lot, yes.
I really like the authentic learning environment section. But I'm glad, I'm also glad that we're just getting a first look at this now, and we don't need to belabor it. And we can go back and look at it in our own time and come back again.
We'll gather some feedback. Yeah, I would say we're about two weeks behind where I wanted to be with this right now. But I also don't feel a need to rush it. Unless I'm alone in that. And if I'm alone in that, just let me know and we can pick up the pace. I just know we lost a little bit of time toward the end of the year with a few things we weren't anticipating.
I'm with you on taking time, Pam.
Go ahead, Ken.
I'm just saying, I'm, I, I agree with Pam in terms of going about this deliberately because just coming into this process, I treat this with the weight of, you know, of, of what we received as joining the school committee five years ago, with the weight of tablets handed down on high, chiseled into stone. So better to be deliberative and get something not necessarily timeless, but meaningful and sustainable.
Yeah. We can all go back and take, take a look at it in our own time. I think that'll be good.
Please do, and I, and I think I like the feedback that there's too much there in the more detailed how-tos can go to, can go to a second section and don't necessarily need representation in the overview. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. So Kate and I worked on putting together our conversation from last meeting into some bullet points. And the, I tried to make it so that anything we really changed was in red. And then the whole, whole new goal is in purple. The colors don't really mean that much.
Are we looking for feedback?
It took me that long to read through them.
Oh, okay.
But, but yes, definitely looking for feedback. It's basically, we took, well, you know, we took what we had last time, we, last time we met, we did some work. We took some notes and then we tried to work with it a little bit so it made sense. So, and the first one is pretty much just the same as it was last year. The second one is the budget one. We changed it from, it used to be manage the district's budget, and we changed it to oversee management up because we don't actually manage it. We really oversee the management of it. We're always looking at educational parity. One is pretty much the same. We just changed the wording a little bit. We do want to make sure we get a new report on the Essex Elementary School and the middle high school building and, and figure out what the timeline is going to be for the new Essex Elementary School. We added the communication goal, which I think is really important, especially since we're starting this process, right? And then we added the diversity, equity, and inclusion goal. Which I, Kate and I worked on that one a lot, and I like it a lot better than the one that we had last year.
Sarah, I can't remember the diversity, equity, inclusion goal that we had last year. I guess I, I worry, or not worry, it just makes me, when I read about the racist practices in district, I wonder, is that too narrow of a focus? Are we just looking to eliminate, identify and eradicate any discriminatory practices in general?
Oh, that could be, we took that language right out, right from the the, what's the word I'm looking for?
The resolution.
Yeah, we took it right from the resolution. But yeah, that's a really good point. So we could, any existing discriminatory practices in the district would be very good, I think, there. I can make that change on my computer, but not on Pam's screen.
Oh, that's fine. Not that we would accept other discriminatory practices are not racist, but it's just, it's like, hmm, it felt limiting.
Yeah, no, that's, this is why we all look at these things together.
Yeah. Thank you for the, thank you for the edits.
Yeah.
Does anyone else feel, though, like the ensure that these things are embedded and practiced? Might feel like tying us down to something we can't maybe accomplish in one year? Like, maybe, I mean, we're just starting this. So I, I don't know that we're capable of ensuring that, that these things are embedded and practiced in a, in a first school year of, of this kind of focus. Like, can we make progress on or something like that? I just, I feel, I wonder if that's-
Initiate.
Am I the only one who feels this way?
No, no, we already tried to tone it down a little bit, but I, I agree.
It's just the ensure that, because we can't guarantee, this is a process.
I don't think, I guess my thinking is that ensuring that something is embedded and practiced doesn't necessarily ensure that it's perfected. And so I, I, I feel like that was my thinking on it.
I don't know that we could get to embedded. Embedded to me is like a long-term, I mean, at this point, identified even would be a, a good start.
What if before embedded, you just added becoming?
Yep.
Are becoming, ensure that diversity, equity, and inclusion are becoming embedded. Ooh, I like that, Eric.
I like that.
That's great. Thanks, Eric.
Can I just share something?
Yes.
Is that okay? So as I've begun, started to begin conversations with our coach, and Sarah, you participated in, in part of that conversation with me. I think he would caution that our first step is building a level of awareness as to where we are in this process. So to Teresa's point, this puts us, this assumes a level of knowledge and awareness that in, in the broad community, both in school and out, that may not yet exist. So I don't know if this is developmentally appropriate for where we are in the process. But it can stand as it's, as a long-term goal, for sure.
Well, it's not a smart goal.
Yeah, and maybe that's what I'm tending, I tend toward. Like, as I'm thinking of the last document, it's kind of got the, the tendency to want to go to deliverables in there.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I, I, I agree. I think this is a lofty goal, and it's not necessarily specific, measurable, what, action items. It's not time-bound. But these are all things that we really are committed to working on. So pause.
I like Eric's thought of just adding becoming because I think that that makes it clear that it's a work in progress and that it's not necessarily an end goal that, that we expect to be completed with by the end of the school year. But I do think that it's really important to state that, you know, we're committed to continuing this work and seeing it through ultimately.
I'm just looking at our goals from last year to see if they were do we want to think about putting it in like a separate little section? Like how budget goals is in a separate section? And then this is like our long-term goal? Or do we just want to leave it and recognize that this is just like a long-term goal, but we think it's important enough to have it out there?
We just add language that says we recognize this is the beginning of a process and to expect this to be a multi-year goal.
I like that. Um, so it would be great if we could adopt our goals at the next meeting. We're clearly not quite there tonight, I think. But I can make those changes and send this around again. And then if you guys have more feedback, sorry, I'm trying to like write the bun of PDF while I'm talking. Okay, so then we can have, so I'll make these changes and send it around again. So is there anything else so that hopefully by the time we meet in two weeks, we could be all, we could put this to bed?
Thank you, guys.
Okay. Okay, I'll make those changes then. And I'll have Kate look at it again, too, because she's a good extra set of, we're a good team. All right, that's the school committee goals. Back to you, Pam.
Okay, one more set of goals. And again, in, in draft form and just looking for some feedback on the ideas and the concepts. So for my goals this year, I've got under student learning. My focus is also going to be on getting our DEI initiative off the ground. Recognizing that it's a multi-year. It's going to be a many, many-year journey to get to where we want to go. But we need to put some basic organizational structures in place to get there. So that's what I'm focused on this year for student learning. For professional practice, we're going to have negotiations this year. That tends to be a large ti- it consumes a great deal of time in the year that it presents itself. So cultivating a positive productive labor management relationship is going to be one of my key goals this year. I've kind of outlined how I see going about that. We have some work to do to reconcile the external and the internal needs of our community. So I could, I can see us really having to front-load the work to be very clear on what our objectives are going into negotiations this time around. Um, I hope, as always, my goal will be to establish a timeline that gets our largest components complete before we need to finalize a budget for next year so that we know specifically what our target is. And to have all the language ratified and complete so that we leave, we go into June with a, a agreement in place for next year. Otherwise, you end up with a situation where it starts to have, we, we have no contract in place. It carries over two years. It becomes, I think, a morale issue for staff when we can't reach agreement. And the time focus on that only increases as time goes on. So we've had success in the past. My hope this time around is to make it more efficient, more, more directed and with a quicker resolution on large issues. The other piece is if we are successful in moving the teacher contract to completion in a timely way, we have a multi-year goal that's been carried forward of beginning to develop a teaching assistant contract. For those who are new to the committee, several years back, MEDA petitioned to have the teaching assistants incorporated into their association. Our process all, went all the way through the Department of Labor. So they are recognized as an agent for the Teachers Association, and they can begin bargaining at any point, but they have not yet come forward in an organized way to do that. It's mostly because of timetable, I think, in, in events that have taken place. So we know that that is something on our collective to-do list that maybe we could try to get to. If this is, you know, if the contract is done, done relatively quickly. Otherwise, I see this starting up next fall with a completion for next spring. Again, we have to be cognizant of the budget cycle when we're doing this because you need to know, you need to know what you can bargain, and you need to have room in your budget to absorb whatever your outcomes are. So that's the game plan there. Again, I've got, this wouldn't, I don't love carrying this as a goal because I, I want to be focused on other things at some point in time. But I do think that the multi-year budget and getting our partners to a place where they have where they have resources and an understanding of how our budget process works and resources available for the up and down nature of the funding formula and how it impacts towns, that something that we owe our internal community here is a budget that is at least stable and sustainable. So I do, I do think based on what we learned last year about the need for additional education, the amount of time we've already put into budget planning over the summer and the schedule we started to line up, line up for the fall, that the budget process, not so much putting things into a spreadsheet and making the numbers balance, but really the relationship building, the communication and the work with our partners to come to common understanding about what the needs are and what the real costs are, are going to be a big part of our work this year. Because what we do need to do is line up, and I think this is what Teresa was, was getting to before with the goals. We really need to have a concrete plan of how we're going to use our reserve funding, what our calendar for an override will be, and if there is going to be ongoing support for either, you know, the 10-year override- override cycle, small overrides over shorter periods of time, how are we going to achieve more stable funding for the school district, so it's easier for both the towns and the schools to plan? With the ultimate goal of us having to spend less time in negotiation around budget every year and more time focused on the schoolwork. And then I just have several open projects that I'd like to get wrapped up in the first half of the year. These aren't lofty goals, but the strategic planning work hopefully will be resolved by mid-October. And that way there, we can set the schools in motion for their planning processes. We'll be bringing the memorial project to a close to a certain degree this year, but this, you know, they will be cleared from the site later this fall. There's a lot of closeout work to do, but for the most part, the impact on the school community directly should be going away as we near December. And the Essex playground is looking great. We just need to tie up the loose ends there. I think the landscaping needs to be complete, and we have to plan the celebration for that. And then I tagged this on to the end more as a reminder that at any point, this could this could reemerge as, as a center stage project. It is my hope that it does not, but it's just a way of accounting for the fact that if conditions change and we're back into, you know, discussions over learning models and concerns about surge, that this could, this could rot, this could consume a good deal of time. We saw it happen this summer. You know, we went through July and most of August, thinking things were going to be very, very normal this year. And then the frenzy started about on or around August 15th with lots of meetings, lots of consults, having to just get our heads around what the latest predictions and guidance was coming at us and how we were going to prepare for the fall. So I think this is, it's at the bottom. Just if I could find a way to creatively put it in the background, I think it's just a way of saying that this is all, this is going to be with us all year in some way, shape or form. The intent is to minimize its impact, but I am prepared for it to, you know, to reemerge as a key issue at any point in time. So that's what is big on my list for the year, looking for feedback, suggestions.
Thanks, Pam. I think it looks great.
Just all this, just all that.
It's wide-ranging, but I appreciate the brevity. You hit, you hit the high points, yeah.
But it's short on paper, but I think each of them are
It's big.
They're big.
Yeah. Maybe it's just late in the day, and I, and I can only do well with things that are on one or two pages. But, no, thank you, Pam. You always are carry enough detail and at the same time are succinct.
If anyone thinks of something like, oh, I thought you were going to be focusing on, just let me know if you think there's something missing or something that needs attention. It could be, you know, the level of a goal, or it could just be something that needs to go on my kind of list of daily management tasks. Like, I didn't include, we'll be having, you know, Julie Riley has moved on to be Assistant Superintendent in Andover. We have an interim in place for the year. Angela Bich will hopefully be able to join us at the next meeting, so you can meet her. I know Teresa and Sarah are able to spend some time with her on opening day. So we'll be having a significant faculty search in January. So there are, there are those everyday things that will also be presenting some big projects, but I didn't think it was necessary to make them goals.
I trust your judgment on that, Pam.
Well, you know how to find me if you have afterthoughts.
Yeah. And will we be finalizing these at our next meeting as well?
Yeah, I think we could finalize both sets of goals at the next session, unless something comes up in the interim that suggests that we needed to do a relook.
Well, I think that would be great. Anybody else comment on questions or on any of the goals? All right. Any school committee comment? It's only 7:40.
My comment is, I want to commend the leadership for running such an excellent, efficient meeting.
I have two quick questions, but it's not really a comment.
Go ahead.
All right. One is, since it came up about replacing Julie, do we have any, any word parents are asking about the athletic director position? Is that, is there a timeframe or a small update on that? And then the second one is, open houses, is there an update on this tentative date? That's all.
They are conducting AD interviews this week. I think she's hoping to have a candidate in place or named by beginning of next week, and we'll have to work out start time, but that's moving along. I know she's had a committee working to identify. And I'm going to ask for a pass on, I knew I was going to get the open house question. I think, I need, we need to think about it for another couple, and it's not thinking about, what we want to do is have regular open house. I just think we need to see a little bit more in terms of what, what the world looks like for us. And I think the 17th is about two weeks out from the first one. We'll probably need to make a decision by then.
Perfectly reasonable. Thank you. And this is efficient.
Other school committee comment? Okay, well, thanks, everybody. Thanks to the people who joined us remotely for the meeting and for your thoughtful and polite comments. I, I hear that in other school committees, sometimes people are really out of control. So I appreciate that even when we have hard things to say, we, I'll say them in a nice way. And, yeah, please reach out if you have questions or thoughts for us, and we'll see you all in two weeks, but we'll see you on, because today's a Wednesday. So we'll see you on the 21st, which is a Tuesday. Right? So do I have a motion to adjourn?
Teresa, did you want to say something?
Is that meeting going to be in person, regular? Do we, have we decided about that?
I, I, I thought we would be staying remote as long as it was all masks all the time in all the school buildings, because it seems kind of bad for us to go all masked and also be in the hybrid meeting. It was like, sort of janky enough without us all doing that, but I'm open to suggestions.
I'm in support. I just didn't know if there had been a decision made. That's all.
So as of now, we'll plan on a virtual unless something changes. Is there anyone that objects?
Okay. And all of the documents from tonight's meeting will be posted online right after this meeting. They usually go up right away?
Yeah, they typically, it'll go up this morning, tomorrow, sometime later in the morning.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'd like to preclude any further clarifying questions from the audience and move that we adjourn.
Go ahead.
Do I have a second?
Ken, did you have a question?
No, I just want to preclude any further ones.
Oh, okay. Oh, you're making a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn, yes, I am. Teresa, I think you have a second. Thanks.
I'm waiting for discussion.
Okay, I'll go through the roll call. Eric?
Yep.
Maybe Matt had to drop off. Kate?
Oh, I'm here, sorry. I didn't hear my name, Matt. I'm here. Yes.
Do you agree with the motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Okay, Kate, Kate? Chris?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay, thanks.
Thank you all.
Good night, everyone.
Be well.